Acceptance through an application process in eighth grade, while others require students to apply in the tenth grade.
Good evening everyone and welcome to the work session of the Charles County Board of Education. Today is Monday, November the twenty-third two thousand twenty. Please join me in reciting Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So the purpose of tonight's work session is uh to discuss student voting rights. At our November the tenth meeting, um Mr. Hurd and um several students presented uh a very nice presentation to us regarding the reasonings behind why they believe they should have voting rights. Uh Mr. Hurd just as a recap, Mr. Hurd um submitted a proposal to the county commissioners um that basically said that the student member would serve as a representative to the of the students enrolled in the school system. And the proposal was would be to amend the annotated code of Maryland so that the student member or the Charles County Board of Education has voting rights in all matters except personnel. And Mr. Hurd went further went on to um elaborate on that and said the proposal includes budget, academic eligibility, the code of conduct, school calendar, the curriculum and any other non-staff related issues. What the proposal does not include is personnel evaluations, teacher union negotiations, staff and hiring appointments, staff disciplinary action and any other staff related issue. So at this time I it is um our opportunity to discuss Mr. Hurd's proposal and uh ask any questions, further question qualifying or clarifying questions I should say. If there's anyone who'd like to start the discussion. Or have questions.
McGraw.
Yes sir.
Would you mind if I introduced the two student members we have joining us tonight?
No, please do, excuse me, I'm glad you mentioned that, thank you.
Uh I'm very happy and pleased to have before us tonight the Anna Rundle County student member and the Montgomery County student member Drake Smith and Nick Asante. And if you wouldn't mind, I know they both have a short uh opening they would like to give to you.
Okay. And who was Mr. Assanti? Yes sir. Please tell us which county are you from?
I'm I'm from Montgomery County.
Alright, would you like to speak?
Of course, I'm good evening, uh chairman Chairman McGraw, Superintendent Hill and esteemed members of the board. I just want to say I'm excited to be here to talk to all of you tonight. I'm Nick Asante, a senior at Richard Montgomery High School in Montgomery County. I'm also the forty-third student member of the Montgomery County Board of Education and uh I'm excited to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, welcome.
Yes, thank you Chairman McGraw. Chairman McGraw, Vice Chairman Wilson, Board members and Dr. Hill. My name is Drake Smith. I'm a senior at Mead High School and the forty-seventh student member of the Anna Rundle County Board of Education. I was asked to be here today by your colleague and my counterpart, Mr. Hurd and give insight on the role of s- of a student member with full voting rights. As you may know, Anna Rundle County has had a full has had a fully voting student member since the nineteen seventy-five nineteen seventy-six school year. That's nearly half a century of student voice on all issues have ever become before our Board of Education. As hairstyles became smaller and jean jeans became tighter, one thing has stayed constant, the power and importance of student voice. I want to close with a quote from my predecessor, Rida Alvi. A vote solidifies not the opinion of one student, needs of all students. I look forward to answering any questions you may have, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Alrighty. Board members. Questions? Concerns? Okay. Ms. Brown?
I'd like to ask both of them how many people are on their Board of Education? How many members?
Uh in Montgomery County, we have eight members, one of them is a student member, so seven um non-student members and one student member. Eight in total.
In Anna Rundle County, we have nine members right now, um eight eight regular eight adult members, one student member. But after this election, after December second, we're gonna transition to eight members total. Seven members that correspond with our council magdis- uh districts and then one student member. We we're in the transition phase from a fully appointed board to a half and half to a fully elected board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hancock? Mr. Hancock?
Yes, I I have a question, uh perhaps Mr. Hurd or the the other student members or anyone on this uh meeting could answer. Um how many student board members with voting rights are under a county government that operates under county council versus county commissioner? That's one thing I'm not sure of. I'm not sure if anyone has the answer to that.
Mr. Hancock, when we did our presentation, we didn't necessarily look for a correlation between that, but I if you would mind, um Mr. Smith and Mr. Assante can elaborate on what their counties are.
Yes, yes, Mr. Hancock, here in Anfield County, we have uh county councils, uh we have a county council, seven council members. And our board, I guess, uh works with them closely.
I'm I'm uh that's similar to Montgomery County, we have a county council and a county executive. And I think we are currently transitioning to increasing the number of county councilmen we have to about eleven.
Thank you, um and Madam Chair, if you don't mind, um as um I know that my fellow board members know, um the role that the Board of Education plays within county government changes drastically um depending on what form of government that county is under. Um we are, we have county commissioners, we don't serve under a um a county council. Um if we were under a county council, our role would be much more limited than
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session of the Charles County Board of Education. Today is Monday, November the twenty-third, two thousand twenty. Please join me in reciting Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So the purpose of tonight's work session is uh to discuss student voting rights. At our November the tenth meeting, um Mr. Hurd and um several students presented uh a very nice presentation to us regarding the reasonings behind why they believe they should have voting rights. Uh Mr. Hurd, just as a recap, Mr. Hurd um submitted a proposal to the county commissioners um that basically said that the student member would serve as a representative to the of the students enrolled in the school system. And the proposal was would be to amend the annotated code of Maryland so that the student member or the Charles County Board of Education has voting rights in all matters except personnel. And Mr. Uh Hurd went further went on to um elaborate on that and said the proposal includes budget, academic eligibility, the code of conduct, school calendar, the curriculum, and any other non-staff related issues. What the proposal does not include is personnel evaluations, teacher union negotiations, staff and hiring appointments, staff disciplinary action, and any other staff related issue. So at this time, I it is um our opportunity to discuss Mr. Hurd's proposal and uh ask any questions, further question qualifying or clarifying questions, I should say. If there's anyone who'd like to start the discussion. Or have questions.
McGraw.
Yes, sir.
Would you mind if I introduced the two student members we have joining us tonight?
No, please do. Excuse me. I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you.
Uh I'm very happy and pleased to have before us tonight the Anna Rundle County Student Member and the Montgomery County Student Member, Drake Smith and Nick Asante. And if you wouldn't mind, I know they both have a a short uh opening they would like to give to you.
Okay. And who was Mr. Asante? Yes, sir. Please tell us which county are you from?
I'm I'm from Montgomery County.
All right. Would you like to speak?
Of course. Um good evening, uh Chairman Chairman McGraw, Superintendent Hill, and the esteemed members of the board. I just want to say I'm excited to be here to talk to all of you tonight. I'm Nick Asante, a senior at Richard Montgomery High School in Montgomery County. I'm also the forty-third student member of the Montgomery County Board of Education, and I um I'm excited to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Chairman McGraw. Chairman McGraw, Vice Chairman Wilson, board members, and Dr. Hill. My name is Drake Smith. I'm a senior at Mead High School and the forty-seventh student member of the Anna Rundle County Board of Education. I was asked to be here today by your colleague and my counterpart, Mr. Hurd, to give insight on the role of s- of a student member with full voting rights. As you may know, Anna Rundle County has had a full has had a fully voting student member since the nineteen seventy-five nineteen seventy-six school year. That's nearly half a century of student voice on all issues have ever be come before our Board of Education. As hairstyles became smaller and jean jeans became tighter, one thing has stayed constant, the power and importance of student voice. I want to close with a quote from my predecessor, Riddel Alvey. A vote solidifies not the opinion of one student, needs of all students. I look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Alrighty. Board members. Questions? Concerns? Okay. Ms. Brown?
I'd like to ask both of them how many people are on their Board of Education. How many members?
Uh in Montgomery County, we have eight members. One of them is a student member, so seven um non-student members and one student member. Eight in total.
In Anna Rundle County, we have nine members right now, um eight, eight regular, eight adult members, one student member. But after this election, after December second, we're gonna transition to eight members total, seven members that correspond with our council magdis- uh districts, and then one student member. We we're in the transition phase from a fully appointed board to a half and half to a fully elected board.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hancock, Mr. Hancock?
Yes, I I have a question, uh perhaps, uh Mr. Hurd or the the other student members or anyone on this uh meeting could answer. Um. How many student board members with voting rights are under a county government that operates under county council versus county commissioner? That's one thing I'm not sure of. I'm not sure if anyone has the answer to that.
Mr. Hancock, when we did our presentation, we didn't necessarily look for a correlation between that, but I, if you would mind, um Mr. Smith and Mr. Asante can elaborate on what their counties are.
Yes, yes, Mr. Hancock. Here in Annapolis County, we have uh county councils, uh we have a county council, seven council members. And our board, I guess, uh works with them closely.
I'm uh that's similar to Montgomery County. We have a county council and a county executive, and I think we are currently transitioning to increasing the number of county councilmen we have to about eleven.
Thank you. Um and Madam Chair, if you don't mind, um as um I know that my fellow board members know, um the role that the Board of Education plays within county government changes drastically um depending on what form of government that county is under. Um we are, we have county commissioners. We don't serve under a a county council. Um if we were under a county council, our role would be much more limited than it is now. Um and I I just want my fellow board members to take that into consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe maybe else? Well, I can share. Uh I'm sorry.
I would like to say, uh sorry, uh Chairman, do I can I make a comment real quick just to respond to Mr. Hancock? I would like to say I do believe that the um Prince George's County smog does have voting rights in some capacity, and Prince George's County um government is uses commissioners. So I do think um there's not necessarily a conflict in that area.
I appreciate that, but that's that's not true. Um Prince George's County uh is a is a county council. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to share some of the input that I've had from our constituents and um and we as board members um represent the entire county. Uh we've been elected by the entire county. I've had some inputs from principals and some teachers, some and from other uh mayb- elected officials. And I do believe that the school board, uh the student member of the board should have a voice in the decisions that are made by the board. Um some of the decisions impact people on many levels, and the student member does in some respects, I do not feel have the life experiences or the perspectives for making some of those decisions. I do believe that at this particular point in time, um a student member is not elected. Student member is um chosen by a small portion of students from our county. And um as I I mentioned earlier, us our us as a board are answerable to the community, but our school student school student member of the board is not. Um I believe that the students are a special interest group and that if we were to allow um this particular special interest group to have input, we would have to allow other special interest groups to have input. I do believe that by the student voice should be heard the way it is being heard right now. Um. Uh so that's just some of my thoughts right now. Ms. Wilson? Yeah, unmute yourself, please. This will, there you go.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I would just like to echo that last year, a very good example unfolded before the Charles County Board of Education where the student board member brought forward an inclusion policy. And and mind you, the student board member did not that does not have voting rights. And he was afforded the opportunity to express his concerns, um you know, explain why there was a need. And our very own uh board member, David Hancock, um countered with a uh um you know, a a co- um a a compromising po- policy where all parties involved. There was a healthy discussion. Um and we reached a conclusion, and I I think that was very enlightening to see the engagement and the fact that the opportunity um to it uh is there. It's just, it's a matter of um the student representatives um speaking up and bringing forth um their concerns. Well, we will certainly listen um very attentively. Um and I I would like um, you know, to hear more from the student representatives um in terms of policy changes. But I am very concerned about influence, outside influence. Um because other groups can very easily uh influence you. Um and it, you know, uh we want to make sure that you have a learning experience, an opportunity for growth, but you're still students, and that's something that weighs uh very heavily is where is the balance between making sure that you're afforded the opportunity to to speak your mind, but also, you know, you are a student. And then in today's times, there's a lot of outside influence. And that's a lot of responsibility to put on a student, in my mind.
Mrs. Abel?
I would like to echo Mrs. Wilson's concerns. That that is one of my number one concerns as well. Um. Student board member would, if he had voting rights, he or she would be under a great deal of pressure, influence, manipulation, not only from other adults in the community, but also from other political figures uh in the pipeline. So that is a big concern of mine.
Mr. Hurd?
We definitely appreciate all the comments that the board members are making. And we especially appreciate that you all are recognizing that student input is needed. And although that we, you know, we disagree on the scope, you know, I would like to bring it back to the example that Ms. Wilson gave where we had an equity proposal that was submitted, and there was that opportunity for our former student member, Mr. Woods, to propose it, share it. But I think there's a vast difference between serving as an advisor and having a real stake in the decisions. And Ms. McGraw spoke to the life experience of a student member and their ability to vote. And I would say, hey, that's what qualifies them to be the student member because they are living every day through the decisions that we are making. I don't think there's a single person on our board who can more directly see the decisions that we make affect them. I know that sometimes we vote, and within the next week, I can specifically pinpoint where that change was made. And I wanted to give Mr. Smith and Mr. Asante the opportunity to elaborate on, especially with Montgomery County, their proposal was passed in twenty sixteen. So how they've been able to make an impact, not just through serving as an advisor to their board, but having weight in the decision and having a vote.
Um just, I would.
Mr. Asante?
I would like to first comment on on the pressures of being a student member and the outside influence. And I think, you know, taking this position, uh as a student, you realize the severity of this position, you realize how important this role is. And, you know, talking to my own board members, they often say the student member is one of the most well-researched members of the board because of the fact that they are a student. They do have to put in that additional work to ensure that they know exactly what they're talking about when they make a comment at the board table. They go through all their board readings, they um gather input from students, they do all the research prior to these meetings. So I think oftentimes, especially when you are a voting member of the board as a student, you do put in that research and you do ensure that you are well-prepared. And um in terms of influence, I know for me personally, I don't think that has either ever really been a factor in any of the decisions I've made at the board table. I think when I am making those decisions, I think directly about my own experiences as a student and um the conversations I've had with other students. And that's really what drives my vote when it comes uh to making those decisions at the board table. And I think that's the consensus amongst a lot of my predecessors who have been able to vote and um amongst other voting smobs across our state.
And if I may just add, I would just.
Yes, you may.
I would just echo a lot of the points that Nick has made, um. My in my time on the Board of Education and speaking with my predecessors, I really felt no pressures. Um I think even if there's a concern of pressures, they were, the simple solution would just be a board workshop, which I've been to many of, uh a board training, I should say, saying, you know, what you can and cannot do. As a board member in our Anna Rundle County Board Handbook, it's plainly put out, which you can and not receive from um private citizens or organizations. But also, I just want to touch on the whole responsibility bit. Um to run for the Maryland House of Delegates, you have to be twenty-one years of age. Um that's not a lot of life expect uh experience compared to an eighteen-year-old, which I am. So it's about the same, and that's, you know, that uh position carries a whole lot of weight being on the Board of Education. So, you know, if they feel, if, you know, the people who wrote that law feel that a twenty-one-year-old can hold the position of being in the Maryland House of Delegates, I'm sure that we can give the responsibility of a vote to the student member. Um we're not really, I mean, you would not be inventing the wheel here. Like I said, Anna Rundle County, we've been doing this for forty-six years, a fully voting member. Uh Montgomery County, um you know, a student member for forty-three years, and various other counties with various other degrees of voting rights have been in the state of Maryland for some time now. And I've seen nothing but success. I've talked with a number of my board members. One of my board members was actually a student member at one point. And they have nothing but good things to say. Um the students so far in my county have selected the best and brightest out of all the candidates. They've all done really a phenomenal uh job. And just from my few conversations with Ian, Mr. Hurd, I know that if he got voting rights or any of his predecessors got voting rights, I am sure they would make do a phenomenal job as he's doing right now without voting rights.
Uh Mr. Well, Ms. Mr. What Mr. Uh Drake and Ms. Asante and Ian have said, I I fully agree, but I have to say that I have to I'm just gonna talk about the elephant that's in the room because I just, some of us and some of the uh constituents that have reached out to me can cannot get past is the fact that we as a group should be a collaborative group. And we were not afforded that collaboration prior to Mr. Hurd submitting the proposal to the commissioners. And I think that's a huge breach in protocol and huge breach um trust on our part. And although we I did speak with Mr. Hurd, and he was very open and receptive to listening to all board members, to me, that showed a huge lack of maturity. And I just feel as though that um we went about this the wrong way, and I'm not so sure that um we're gonna be able to repair that, at least on s- on some levels. Mr. Hurd, I saw your hand first, and then Mr. Heim.
Ms. McGraw, I'm certainly sorry that you feel that way. But and I I want, you know, full disclosure for it to be known that uh in hindsight, we absolutely could have brought this sooner to the board. We had a deadline to meet. And we wanted this to be a discussion that occurred. But as you may recall, immediately after realizing that the chair and vice chair and other members of the board were upset or irritated by the fact that we proposed it, I offered to revoke the proposal and bring it back at a more suitable time. And in our meeting, we both, you, Ms. McGraw, and Ms. Wilson, as a group, agreed that it was okay for the proposal to move forward. And I'm sorry that you feel that way. But I I feel like we've made a genuine effort to repair and make amends to move forward on the principle and not the process of this proposal.
Well, I I have to qualify that answer as well because if you do remember, I said, I I s- I did say that I I would prefer at that time for you not to re- uh rescind it because it would not look good in the eyes of the public. Um and there would be more, I think, controversy if we had asked you to remove it without having any discussion. I had hoped that you would come to the decision um after that to do the right thing. So I then saw Mr. Lucas's hand.
Thank you, Ms. McGraw. Yeah, thank you, Ms. McGraw. I actually have a question for Mr. Schwartz, but Mr. Hurd's comment prompted another question. Mr. Hurd, you said you had a deadline to meet. What what deadline was that?
The Charles County Commissioner State Legislative Proposal Submission Deadline was the deadline we were trying to meet.
All right, thank you. Um my my question for Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz, could you could you just elaborate on on the overall process? And the, I I would say, the direct effect of of our board in in this happening or not?
Uh as uh um Mr. Hurd has recognized, as as the board understands, uh this is state law that we're talking about. This change in state law would have to go through the General Assembly. Generally, the General Assembly would consider bills like this coming from the local delegation from that county. And so the delegation from Charles County would likely be the one to propose this particular change that affects Charles County. Other counties may decide to join or not to join for their own counties and boards, but it would be a Charles County delegation bill that would likely be proposed if this were to go forward. Uh the idea of going through the county commissioners was to get the county commissioners to make it part of the county commissioner proposal to the state delegation. And uh that's uh currently where the proposal sits.
However, the but the the our delegation from Annapolis can, with or without the commissioners or board's um approval, submit that legislative package. Is that correct?
Correct. They they could sponsor a bill directly. Correct, certainly.
Right? And in general, what's the history of of bills um that don't have a support of either county government or a Board of Education government? When they're introduced by a legislature? Or by delegate delegation, sorry, to the legislature?
Uh that's hard to answer in in historical terms because there are bills that pass and 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 not pass every year uh under those circumstances. Uh I will also point out, in this particular year, uh under the COVID uh circumstances, there's going to be uh a different type of session moving forward, so it's harder to predict what uh the General Assembly would be willing to consider and not consider since the public input would be lessened based on COVID. But historically, uh bills have passed and bills have not passed under those circumstances. It's it's is, there's really no way to to know for sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hancock, I saw your hand next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think I'm gonna direct this question to Mr. Schwartz. I think he may have the answer that I'm looking for, and this goes back to the initial question that I asked um uh during the the start of this meeting. Um, Mr. Schwartz, if you have the uh the an- the answer to this, um I would appreciate it if you do have it. Um. The answer I'm looking for is of the counties that that have smobs with voting rights, I I really would like to know which of those counties have a county council versus commissioner form of county government? And then, as we're on public record, if you can, I know I'm asking a lot. Can you explain to us and the public the the difference between the difference in the role that the county government has on a Board of Education, if it is county council versus county commissioners, being as how much power we actually have? I think that really plays a major role in this. Um under a county council, basically hires our superintendent. Uh under county commissioner, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schwartz or anybody, um under county commissioner, we as board members hire our superintendent. I think there's a major difference there, and everything that I've seen here, at least in the state of Maryland, um the counties that that do offer their student board members for even partial voting rights operate under a county c- council type of government, which really limits the power that the Board of Education has. Um under a county commissioner form of government, we have a a larger, a larger role. We have more power. And and to me, that's something that I I really want people to understand um as we as we discuss this. So, Mr. Schwartz, I don't know if you have anything you could add to that, or or correct me if I'm wrong, or or add any information. Um but if you have anything to add, I I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
I I will point out that of the uh current board's education with a voting student member, uh all of those boards are in counties with county executives and county councils. Uh Baltimore City has a mayor, not a county executive, but a a a that's form of government where there's an executive and a council. Uh as far as the difference in in the powers of the board, the biggest differences are in Baltimore City and Prince George's County, which have uh to answer more to the county government than in other schools. government than in other school systems. But generally, uh, school boards are independent from county government otherwise. Uh, but you were right for the uh Prince George's County and Baltimore City. Their uh form of uh uh the board's uh governmental structures is slightly different.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I appreciate it.
Ms. Brown.
Having in the past worked with high school students and many of them taking very uh heavy academic loads. I really worry about the toll that this would have on a student. Um, there were times in many of them that were taking heavy academic loads where they were having meltdowns, just trying to get together and get grips on their academics. But even through this year, through COVID, we got many, many emails that were really weighing weighing on me mentally. And I just worry about that kind of thing having a mental effect on a student when they're getting all of those different emails from every direction, asking them to do this and asking them to do that or and some of them weren't even very nice. So I just worry about the toll that those kinds of things would have on a student in high school.
I've raised my hand quite a few times. I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Yeah, yeah, I mean.
You're muted, Mr. McGraw.
You're still muted.
You're still unmuted.
I have heard anything you said.
I am sorry, Ms. Battle Lockhart, please, and then Mr. Heard, excuse me.
Uh, no worries. I was like, I know my hands are small, but they were right. Um, I just wanted one per- I just want, I need some clarity on a couple of things. Um, there, the discussion you stated that you all had with Ian in regards to the revoking or not revoking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when was, that wasn't brought forth to the the other board members or did I miss something? And then I feel that, hold on, I I'm just gonna say it all at once and then you kind of. And then I almost feel like I think we need to acknowledge the fact that um advocacy is is something that um is 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 a good thing. And to want to be an advocate for um your fellow students um is a great thing as well. I I just feel like um right now, it seems like we're, you know, we, I have to say we, because we're together. We're condemning him for making a decision that something apparently from what I'm understanding, if correct me if I'm wrong, is that that he learned this at a conference or something that he was at, and that's how he he uh was informed in regards of the the deadline that needed to be met, so that allowed him to want, in order to move faster. I don't think the intent was what we're trying to protect portray it to be um for what I'm understanding. And I can tell by the energy of how that was just delivered. There was a problem with that particular piece that he had did um as it relates to moving forward with the commissioners. So I just don't want us to overcloud the fact that um we're sitting here with the forty-seventh student and the forty-third student in other counties and um understand what the purpose of this is all about. Um, I know you guys see me as the one that always seem like to go with everybody else, but this is not me going with everybody else. I just want you all to understand that we have had several stu- the student board member prior to, as you just spoke about. Was very vocal in regards to trying to get things done. And it seems as though the energy that just came forth early on as it relates to, because he went a different route, that it seems like we're, you're being harder on him because of this particular situation. But um, I just wanna understand, um, I know the other two uh or mi- guest board members that are here. Um, you spoke a little bit on it in regards to the influence and the pressures. Um. I I would like to understand is te- to be uh be transparent and what are some of your some of your greatest challenges as student board members currently? Or have you heard from your previous student board members, some of their greatest challenges as a student board member? So it's because it seems as though you all are articulating yourselves very well. But let's be honest and let's talk about some real challenges that you faced as board member or other student board member, if you don't mind.
Sure. I guess the first real challenge is the onboarding process. There are a lot of little nuances that comes with being a s- a board member, a general board member. I'm sure you can all remember your first few um months on the Board of Education. You know, it was a little tricky learning. The different processes, how you interact with other boards around the state, your local government and your state government. Um, but thank God Google is free and that answers a lot of the questions. And we have a fantastic board attorney, board assistant, and they help us with a lot of that process. So really, that was my only struggle, but that comes with any board member, right? Um, there is no choir of hmm. There's no prior qualification to become a school board member. Um, it's it's a nice thing to have, but it's not mandatory. I'm sure that's probably just an age limit in most counties. Um, so it's just the regular onboarding process that I found to be the most um difficult. And even then, it was pretty easy to overcome. Not to brag, I like to think of myself as a smart guy. So uh, that's my answer.
How about you?
I'll echo that. I think for me, the hardest part was definitely that beginning phase, getting used to the way in which the board runs. Uh, getting used to the board dynamic and all the responsibilities that come with being a board member. But once you get into that group, once you get into that routine, um, you know, you're able to manage everything, you're able to handle it. And I know um for me, a lot of my board members have been there to give me advice, have been there to make that transition a lot easier. So um, once you're really in the role, it's not as hard as once you're starting off. But I think, like um Drake said, that's that's common for all board members.
Thank you. And Ms. McGraw, if you don't mind answering the original question, thank you.
Not at all. When this whole process, when the uh proposal was submitted, and there was some concern about the the nature of the proposal and how it was all handled, Mr. Heard reached out to all of the board members and asked if we we would like to meet with him to talk about what transpired. So I reached out and I asked him, I made an appointment to talk with him about what my concerns were, as any other board member had that opportunity to do. And I know several other board members met with him as well. So, no, I did not share it in the in the meeting. I was satisfied uh with the conversations that we had.
Okay, I was just con- because I was concerned because you all has stated that, well, not that you stated uh in regards to the revoking of um maybe moving it to another time or doing it at another time. I I thought that would be considered an opportunity for maybe all of us to discuss and see how we all felt about that. That's all I was asking.
Oh, clarify for me, what did you mean, we moved it to another time?
Like when you you stated earlier in regards to him saying, asking what he consider revoking and
Right.
in submitting at another time or moving forward at another time.
Right. Well, and that was I would have liked to have had this legislation to come forward after there was collaboration between the students and the board members as a joint proposed legislation. So when Mr. Heard asked if I wanted him to rescind it, I said to him then, no, and I will reiterate that I said it would, I felt that it would be more controversial if I asked him to do that. And would and that he needed to talk with all of us and have an opportunity to present it before the board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna follow up with that and um just to speak to Ms. Battle Lockhart, um, and I think Madam Chair did a great job saying that that was.
We lost you.
That was just a.
You broke up.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you, yes, sir.
No, you're kind of spotty.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, if you can.
Well, it's probably gonna be in and out, so I'm just, I I I'm good.
Okay. What do you hear now?
Maybe type it in the chat so we can see what you're ta- trying to say.
Is there another hand? Did I, did I see another hand? Mr. Asante.
Ms. Wilson as well.
Okay, Mr. Santi and then Ms. Wilson.
I'm sorry.
You, I think um I did wanna comment on um Ian's decision with the process. I think I've de- I definitely sympathize with the boy's frustration for maybe the way he went about the proposal, but I think it is important to recognize that um having smob voting rights transcends Mr. Heard himself. I think, you know, this is something that impacts all future smobs. And though he did, um, you know, we may uh be unhappy with his decision in the present. I think uh just from me personally, I know I learned from the past mobs, I learned from their mistakes. Um, and board members have to, you know, expressed those concerns that they've had with past mobs, and I've learned from that. So if this is an issue that you may have with Mr. Heard, um, this is something that can be discussed with future smobs, to ensure that, you know, the processes that the board appreciates are followed the way that the board would like to have those processes followed. But um I don't think the decision should weigh on Mr. Heard's um actions as, like I mentioned, you know, this is a decision would transcend him now as mob and would impact future smobs as well.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I've, and and I know that we're having quite a bit of discussion about the process, but um there is also a teacher sponsor that it was supposed to been part of the process. And like uh when I sat down with Mr. Heard, I I shared with him that this is a teachable moment. And the, this is the whole idea about this process of student government involvement, that this is a teachable moment. This is a growing experience. And so as I weighed uh through this, and I would tell you, it forced us as board members to go back into research. You know, who, which uh uh d- school districts has voting rights, to what level, to what degree? As Ms. McGraw has already alluded to, a number of our constituents has reached out to us and shared their concerns and their questions. So I don't want you to walk away from this um with, well, the decision was made because of the process. I see this as a teachable moment. We can learn and grow from it. And we want you to learn and grow from it as well. Um, but I would cir- circle back um and remind everyone, you are a student first. And um I and and I'm always cons- um putting the priority on making sure that your learning experience is getting the best that it can possibly can given the circumstance. And I'm just concerned about the level of responsibility, the outside pressures. Um, and the fact that the proposal is pretty broad. And uh I'm not sure that it's fully understood by the student what what is entailed. I mean, it's gonna be a learning experience for each of these different areas. If if uh tasked to with the voting right and that, and so when I, I just want you guys to know that we weighed a a whole lot on this issue to to, and I think all of us have in our mind our decision, not just one element, but what other school districts are doing, what are the benefits? What's the level of responsibility? And Mr. Hancock brought up a very important point about the difference between um the type of government. So um, you know, th- this can take a a whole different approach, but it's all about what serves the best interest of the students for me in terms of your growing e- experience. Um, and I leaned back to what happened last year where we had a student representative brought forth a great proposal, was able to voice their opinion, and we we brought it to a successful conclusion. So. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I'd just like to say, in all fairness, to to shift the focus because it's not just the process. I would like to hear from board members regarding the substance of um Mr. Mr. Heard's proposal because there's other things to consider. I don't wanna just say that I'm focusing on that for my decision. So the 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 um rights that have been expressed, I'd like to hear from board members. Ms. Abel, I saw you raise your hand.
I would just like to, I'm, only other board members will be able to understand this. But as newly elected board members, when you were first brought on as a board member, everything that you were required to learn and know, I would have to say for me personally, and I don't know about yourselves, but for me personally, it took me a good nine months to a year to fully process and grasp everything that it entails with being a board member and all the different aspects of construction and curriculum and enrollment and everything that goes along with it. Uh, budget, uh, it was a lot. Our board members are, our student board members are only here for a year. Um, so that is another reason of concern to fully onboard um a student board member with voting rights. Um, and as my other fellow board members have relayed, we always take student opinion into consideration and ask for student opinion, and their voice is heard with or without voting rights.
Mr. Heard.
In in response to what Ms. Abel said, and she absolutely makes a very valid point. And we drew the comparison with, you know, a student member does have difficulty with the onboarding. But I wouldn't necessarily equate the experience that the student member has with an adult board member because of the fact that we have several mitigations for it. The first being, as you all are aware, we have a liaison program. So, for example, when I first became student member, I had already had a year under my belt of serving in the boardroom, seeing the process and in some cases, networking with board members. And this is one potential area where student members, potential student members can get involved. Our alternate student member is a liaison and the dual effect of that, when you all join the board, you are seven at-large members and you don't have a predecessor who necessarily says, here's my seat, do good by it. We do. We only have one student member, and every year I had this conversation with Dewan, Mr. Woods. And I'm sure I will have it with my successor. We talk about what went well and what went wrong. And uh, I know Mr. Asante brought up a very valid point that I'm sure this is going to be a very lengthy conversation I have with my successor about how the legislative process works and how to navigate turbulent oceans and build consensus. But on on the legislative proposal and how it was submitted, and may- maybe Mr. Schwartz can elaborate on this. But we were navigating it for the first time, and it's not an expectation that a member on the Board of Education knows how to navigate this process. Usually, they stay within the realm of the Board of Education. So I imagine any board member would have had difficulty if they were in the same shoes I was in, but that does not excuse the fact that we wanted to meet a deadline and we really wanted to have this conversation with you guys. However, my understanding, and this can explain my logic behind how I've approached this, is we were under the impression that it being a proposal was a a positive because it's not a bill. It's not set in stone. And there's room for it to be amended. And if the commissioners approve it, they are the ones who write the bill. That's our understanding. Versus had we brought a bill to you that, you know, that we had talked to the delegates about, I feel like that would have been atrocious and a disservice to our board. However, all we submitted was a proposal to get the discussion started, and we're having great discussion on concerns we see. However, we don't have a bill yet, and it's in the commissioners' shoes and they, the commissioners' hands. And they've expressed that they want to hear what you guys have to say, and you all have been very vocal. But I'm hearing a lot of, we disagree with the process and I'm I'm so sorry. If I had a time machine, I would have gone back and told myself to do it a different way. But you live and you learn, and we're moving forward. And the, and personally, the conversation I had with every single board member was, I hope by the end of this, you can truly form your opinion on the substance. And I know Mr. Asante and Mr. Smith also brought this to a point that this transcends us. This is something that we're, we are going to live with as a community past your remaining years as board members, past my year as a board member. This transcends any, anything, you know, and we this will, the decision we make will stay in effect when we don't even. this will, the decision we make will stay in effect when we don't even remember what COVID is, you know, hopefully when it's all gone and over. This is a very big picture item. And I feel like we've laid the framework for you all to have influence in the decision, but we're getting caught up on the process. And I'm very sorry about that. But as Ms. McGraw said, I I would like to know by the end to- tonight, where board members stand on the substance of the issue and whether you can support it. And if you can't support it today, let's say this proposal was done perfectly, what would you put in your dream student member voting rights proposal? You're still muted, Ms. McGraw.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Hancock, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can y'all hear me now? I know my signal was a little broken up before.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I want to touch on a couple of things. Number one, I I know we we have talked a little bit about the way uh Mr. Heard proposed his legislation. And um, you know, I that that is one part of this. And just to address that, um, as a as a voting board member, as as all seven of us are, let's say I, as David Hancock, want to get something done. The first thing I need to do is get at least three other board members to agree with me. And I think that's rule number one that we all need to learn. And that's, I think that's where this fell apart from the get-go is not keeping it in-house and saying, hey, I want to move forward. So if if I have an idea that I want to get done, I'm going to talk to Madam.
Lost you.
Y'all hear me now? My signal.
Yes. Go ahead.
When I greatly. But I do think, you know, from the get-go, deal we have has to start in-house to move forward. Um. The other as board members, Mr. Heard does a great job representing the students of this county. He does an excellent job of that. But we all represent the entire county, the students of the county, taxpayers of the county, the parents of the county, the teachers of the county, and everyone in between. We're not beholden to one specific group um where the student board member is. We're elected by the county as a whole, and I think that's something we need to keep in mind as we move forward. Mr. Heard has done a great job, as every student board member before him has. And his input carries a great amount of weight. It's something that we all take into consideration. Given that position voting rights, especially in a county commissioner form of government where we as board members carry a significant amount of power versus a a county former government, as a county council that can override Board of Education members uh decisions, we need to keep that in mind. Um, Prince George's County was brought up earlier. Prince George's County, actually, their county executive can hire their superintendent. In Charles County, we as board members hire our superintendent. That's something we really need to focus on right now. And if you look at the counties that have student board members with voting rights, the stark difference is the form of county government and a county council form of government, that county government has a tremendous amount of power that can override county commissioner form of government. In our county, we have a tremendous amount of power and we have to keep that in mind as we make this decision. It's not really a vote because I mean it's up.
Lost you.
Jumping in and out, and I do apologize for that. I'm very sorry.
It's okay.
Hopefully that all kind of came through. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, did I see your hand?
You did, just thank you. And it may be the last thing that Mr. Hancock said that didn't quite come through, but um Mr. Schwartz, um, Mr. Heard made a comment, and I'm paraphrasing, that that this 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 lies with commissioners. And again, is that necessarily true? I mean, the commissioners don't have to put this forward in a legislative package. Um, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that that delegation can, as they've done in the past, submit items without commissioner consent and review or approval or board vet consent approve or review. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lucas, I might just add that um when the commissioners uh the night of the legislative proposal meeting chose to table the dis- table a decision on the the Mr. Ian, uh Mr. Heard's proposal until we, they heard from us and what our input was. So just depending on what we discuss this evening, I will then be in touch with Mr. Collins, the Commissioner Collins, to let him know what our position is. Mr. Heard, I see your hand.
Thank you. I would just like to address Mr. Hancock's remarks. And he's obviously put a lot of research into this and he's dug deep into what, you know, we're talking about substance here and he's really dug deep into potential issues that could arise in the future. And you know, there there is a difference between our county structures. But there is also a difference with our proposal between Anarundo County and Montgomery County and that it doesn't have any power and it is not beholden to anything dealing with staff issues. And I think when you, when you look at what would be included in our proposal, the only item that I think the commissioners might take interest with would be the budget. And historically in the past, they have intervened with this board with the budget process and that power exists for them to do that. Which my thinking would be, that leaves things like academic eligibility, code of conduct, and any other thing that may fall outside of the realm of staff. But even then, with the board, the commissioners not being able to review it, I feel like our proposal isn't negated necessarily by our form of county government.
Mr. Hancock, your hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully you guys can hear me. The problem, and I appreciate Mr. Heard's uh response to that. The problem with what comes out of Annapolis is we don't control what comes out of Annapolis until it's in a bill form and laying it right in our our lap. And it's a great proposal, but we have zero control over other than the fact we give them, this is what we want. By the time it gets back to us, it can be completely different than what we're asking for. Unless somebody's up there, over their shoulder saying, no, we want this, or yes, we want that. There's a lot. There's a lot. It takes an idea to create a bill. But a bill, when it's done, can be an idea that's completely different than what it started with.
Mr. Dre- Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Um, I do, just to Mr. Hancock's last point, I do believe there's this thing called local courtesy, where if your commissioners submit something, I do believe that Curtis and it just affects your county, not any other county, and your whole delegation is for it. I do believe that it's courtesy of the state of the General Assembly to pass it as is with no additions. I'm pretty sure that is the common courtesy. Um, that's what I've heard from my delegates and that's why I've heard from my county council people and my own board members. So I think the reason Ian went to your commissioners first, um, one, he's trying to meet the deadline. But also if he has their support plus your support, that really mitigates the chance that the proposal will even get changed at all, right? Because how does that look at someone from, let's say, Montgomery County changes it and, you know, they have nothing to do with Charles County? You know, so I I would think that that you know, that if, you know, if I was in your position, um, then granted that we have very different positions, you know, just because of our geographical features and how our county government is set up. And that just to me wouldn't be that big of an issue. Um, this is, to me, this is not really going to change the whole structure of the Charles County government. You're still going to have your own authority. They're still going to have their own authority. So I I would hope that this doesn't really stop the overall goal of this measure, this proposal, to give the student member voting rights. Um, yes, you have to serve the families of Charles County, but the people you serve mostly every day are the students. And I think giving the students their own independent voice, right? Where you actually have to listen to that voice. That voice really has an impact on your decisions. I think that really go a long way. That would show each and every student that you really care about their voice.
Uh, Mr. Hancock, one more time.
Best time. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
And that's, that's hundred percent true, but with the student board member understanding with a voting right, he's no longer representing just the students, he's representing the county as a whole, as all seven of us are. Not just about the students at that point. It's about everyone that we are, the seven of us are duly elected as. Um, yes, he's elected strictly and only by the students, while the seven of us were are elected by the the county as a whole, from everyone of the legal voting age of eighteen and up. And uh I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair that someone who is elected by students has the power to 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 have a voting right that uh that uh overrides the majority of the county. And a year from now, when that member is no longer serving, uh the remaining seven have to have to have to continue on with what we voted for or against. So you're elected by by the students, but you're, if you got voting rights, you're no longer serving just a student. You're serving the entire county. And there is a heavy toll and a very heavy price that comes with that. I just want to drive that home and I I again, for the very last time, want to drive home the point, difference in government. Under a county commissioner form of government, our power as board members is extremely greater. Um, we cannot be overruled on certain things. Where under county council, we can be. And uh that's my my final, my final argument. Thank you.
So if I might just comment on that and also uh to use my comments tonight as an example, when I spoke this evening, I wasn't just speaking for Virginia McGraw. My s- my comments were a compilation of those constituents that reached out to me, I mentioned that earlier. So I was representing many of, many members of the community. So when Mr. Hancock mentioned about uh, you know, we're selected to represent the entire community as a lot at large, our board policy eighty-one forty says that we may not either legally or with a propriety act as a representative of any one segment of the community. So I want us to keep that in mind as well. Okay. Mr. Heard.
And I think a great point is being raised, and this is a conversation I had individually with one of our board members. And it it dove into the discussion of the the ethicality of students electing someone who the community theoretically doesn't have any control over. And you know, the point we kind of ended up at was that, and I'm sure Mr. Smith and Mr. Assante can elaborate with their experiences. But I feel like there's a misconception with student being on the front of that, student member. That their votes are directly in the interests of the students and only the students. But I think we all understand that as student members, if we have a voting right, if I if a future member had a voting right and Mr. Smith and Mr. Assate having a voting right, when you have that, you are voting for the good of the school system. And I've previously brought that back to, I have sometimes extreme opinions that are very clearly oriented towards the student, because I serve in an advisory capacity. So it wouldn't make sense for me as an advisor to this body to say, I think the community as a whole thinks. However, if a student member had a vote, they would look at it logically from what benefits the school system as a whole. But the component we're looking for is they're held accountable by the students. They're voting for the good of the community, but at the end of the day, they have to listen to their students and they are put in place by their students based on the visions and the points that those students see need to be addressed.
So if we were to move forward and and look at your proposal and those areas that you did propose, I would like for you to elaborate on the very last one, which says any other non-staff related issues. Because that is very, very broad to me. So what did you have in mind?
When we wrote that PowerPoint, that, you know, that's not anything, that's not like a law or a bill. Our intention was to try to illustrate examples of what would fall within personnel or outside of personnel for the board. And this is contingent on the commissioners drafting a bill and moving forward with this proposal. But I I think it's, you know, unreasonable for us to list every single thing. You know, the point is, like Montgomery County and like other boards, we made an exclusion. Because if we were to list every single voting item, I don't think, you know, theoretically, let's say our student member had their voting rights given to them in twenty sixteen, and we listed out every single responsibility they had to vote on. I don't think COVID would be under it or reopening schools, but it is an issue that directly affects students. And my point being, we as a board and moving forward with this proposal, can't necessarily predict or anticipate every single thing that will come under the exclusion or the inclusion. We can't anticipate every single personnel issue that may arise. But we certainly can try to create examples and apply that rule. And that's what we were trying to do with that PowerPoint.
Okay. Other board members, comments?
Madam Chair, do we vote on this tonight?
Well, we can, yes, because I need to, I need to move forward with some sort of position on to share with county commissioners. I think. Mr. One second. Mr. Schwartz, am I correct? Would I be correct in doing that?
Yes, I think the board can take a position to to express to the county commissioners. We're not taking a position on the bill as Mr. Heard said, there's no bill before us to to vote on. It's a, the concept of a student voting on all non-personnel matters.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Could Mr. Schwartz clarify that statement? We're only voting or we, you only need a consensus on what now?
Yeah, I think what the commissioners are asking for is a position on Mr. Heard's proposal to them. And his proposal was for the student to have a vote on all non- non-personnel related matters. Uh, if this were to go forward, obviously a bill will be drafted and we would see the language of the bill. But I think they're looking for our position on the concept of moving forward in that in that manner.
Mrs. Abel?
So for clarification, if someone was to make a motion to decline the proposal for voting on non-personnel matters, wouldn't that just leave it open for voting on personnel matters?
I think the proposal before the county commissioners is to give the board members a, the student board member a vote on all non-personnel matters. So do we want as a board to support having a voting student board member? And he would be voting on non-student, on non-personal matters, again, depending on how the bill is actually written. So the the, putting the personal matters aside, let's not focus on that. The question is, do we want a student member with a vote?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a a motion on the floor.
Ms. Wilson?
I put a motion that there is no change in the voting privileges of the student board member. That the recommendation be to the county commissioners not to proceed with the proposal.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to not support not, because I want to make sure you get the wording right, not support the proposal for student voting rights. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that, is that the intent? I'm sorry. I mean, we're, I, I heard two different things. I, I heard. Previously that we're voting on what was presented to the commissioners. But that's not the motion that I just heard.
To not. To give the student voting rights on non-personal matters. Tell me how you want to. How you want this to be read, Ms. Wilson.
I, I would like for it to be read that the proposal, as, as presented to the county commissioners, not go forward for legislation.
Okay, as presented to county, bear with me, commissioners. Proposal as we did, not be, not go forward. Any discussion on this? Further discussion? Ms. Wilson, I see your hand.
I just want to make the comment, one of our, one of the student representatives. Um, stated something that is an understanding. And that is, there's a common courtesy that is generally extended to elected officials. And that I just would just, as part of the discussion, is going forward. We always welcome the opportunity to collaborate and to provide input. On any piece of legislation, whether it be at the county or at the state level. Because after all, we want the best piece of legislation to get through. And so we welcome the courtesy, we encourage the courtesy. We welcome the opportunity to discuss and to clarify any, uh, questions. And to make sure that there is clear understanding. And that, um, this is, this is what government is all. Are you still there? Can you guys hear me? We can't hear Ms. McGraw. Are we frozen in time?
Tina, your, your, your sound is breaking up. You're not clear.
Okay, that's all that I needed to say.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reeves. Is everyone connected now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on the, on the motion? All right, the motion reads, uh, that the proposal as presented. To the county commissioners not go forward for considered legislation. That we as a board propose. So I have to tip a one for a vote.
I'm sorry, Ms. McGraw, can you read that again? You were breaking up my end, I'm sorry.
That the proposal as presented to the county commissioners regarding student voting rights. Not go forward for considered legislation.
So just for clarification, are we saying we're considering it, but not as is written? That's because that's what it sounded like you just said.
Is that the intent, Ms. Wilson?
The, the intent is for, for no proposal to go forward to change the voting rights of the student member. But even in the proposal.
Yeah, because it said as written, so it sounds like you want to, we're considering to rewrite, have it request a rewrite to me in my mind and.
So, so would, would the language, would the clarifying language say? The Charles County Board of Education, Board of Education does not support student voting rights. Is that easier?
If that's what we're, if that's what you guys are saying, because that's not what it sounded like.
That's what I'm proposing.
I agree, and we'll second that again.
Okay, B O E.
Mike has his hand up.
I see that. I was just trying to get this before I forget. Okay, Mr. Lucas.
Oh, so that, that was the point that I was trying to make. And, and that, that's, that's all I wanted to say, and I'm not, again, I'm not. I, I, I'm trying to see. What position we should be taking. Because when we started the meeting, it was with the intent to support or not support. What had been submitted to the county commissioners. And for me, I believe that's what we should be voting on.
Well, the proposal was, you would like to hear the proposal? Let me read the proposal one last time. A proposal to amend the annotated code of malice so that the student member on the Charles County Board of Education. Has voting rights in all matters except personnel. The student member serves as a representative of the students enrolled in the school system. This would bring Charles County in line with several other jurisdictions in the state, which grant their student member voting rights. And that's all in quotes. That's how it was proposed to the commissioners.
Okay, so is it, so then, is it possible then to vote on what you just said?
That, do we support that or not support that? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
It's possible.
So I think that's where, I think that's where Ms. Wilson wanted. Uh, and I believe, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
Go ahead, go ahead. Ms. Wilson, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Time out. Mr. Schwartz, would you help me clarify all of this? Uh, we, can we change this language, or do we need to go forward with a vote on the, on the motion as it is, was written? Or as I read it back? What do we need to do?
Before we get into the Roberts rules answer to that. I think what the commissioners, I think what the commissioners are looking for is what is our position on giving the student board member voting rights? I think if we were to support his voting rights, we may have concerns about what he's voting on. If we don't support his voting rights, that's a different answer. So I think the commissioners are simply looking for, where do we stand on the board member having voting rights? And I think Mrs. Wilson had a motion on the table. Uh, Mrs. Abel has seconded it, it was up for discussion. But if there's any concern or confusion about what's being voted on. I'll turn it back to Mrs. McGraw. Mrs. McGraw, you can actually read what's being voted on, and let's get this moving forward. I think, I think we all know what we're trying to do, and we're getting confused with, with the wording.
With the language, okay. So we changed it to Charles County Board of Education does not support student voting rights. Mrs. Abel, I see your hand. Can't hear you.
No further question.
So we're going to vote.
Kelly.
Roberts rules, Mr. Schwartz.
So there was, there was a, a motion for, there was a, a, a vote, a calling for the vote. But we're, we weren't finished discussing yet. Mrs. McGraw, if you wanted to let the board members finish the discussion. Uh, before we again, uh, get to the point where we're actually voting, because I think I saw a couple of board members with their hands up before we get to that point.
All right, I didn't see hands. So if you, more discussion, Mr. Lucas?
So.
Further discussion.
And again, you'll read the motion again before we vote. Um, just for the record, I, I cannot support what is in front of the commissioners going forward. And, and, and. Not, not to speak for Ms. Wilson, but I think she was trying to say that perhaps in the future. There are, or there is something that could be done. Um, but I'm not comfortable with the proposal as it currently reads to have voting rights for everything except personnel. I just wanted to have that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Did I see other board members' hands for discussion at this time? Okay, board members only. Um, okay, so the. Motion reads, Charles County does not support student voting rights. All those in favor, please, I'm going to call the roll. Mrs. Abel.
Yes.
Mrs. Battle Lockhart.
I was saying.
Mrs. Brown. Yes. Mr. Hancock.
Yes.
Mr. Lucas.
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw, yes. The motion carries.
Ms. Wilson says yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, I forgot your name, because you're a W, you're very last. Please excuse me. I could not. Okay, the motion carries.
And Mrs. McGraw, did you want student opinion?
Student opinion.
The student opinion is in the negative.
All right, the vote, one, two, three, four, five. Six in favor, one against, one abstention. Motion carries. That concludes our discussion for this evening. Mr. Schwartz, anything else? Yes, Ms. Abel?
Your, your, your summary was incorrect.
One, uh. One, two, right, five.
Four and.
One, two. One, two, three, four. Six in favor, one student opinion against, and one abstention. Thank you, Ms. Abel. Any other, Mr. Schwartz, okay to. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn this work session.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it was, uh, moved by Mrs. Brown and seconded by Mrs. Abel, was that correct? I, um, would like to thank Mr. Asante and Mr. Smith for joining us this evening. Um, and thank you, Mr. Hurd, for your input as well. Me, uh, all those in favor of adjourned meeting, Ms. Abel?
Yes.
Ms. Battle Lockhart? Yes, Ms. Brown? Mr. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
And Miss McGraw, yes. Student opinion, yes. We're going. Thank you. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir.